Dear Heavenly Father, be with us as we do the business for the city and the community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
This is an approval of agendas. This is the approved agenda for today, August 12, 2024, regular time of the community.
Move to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. As I am D., citizens comments. At this point, we will allow citizens comments on anything that they need necessary. If citizens allow freedom, they must state their first and last name and where they reside. This chair at this point, you open citizens comments.
All right, we'll open citizens comments.
Thank you very much. Good, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is George Lee. I live at 227 North Spurges in Goddard. And in my part-time job, I've come across some information about water that I thought I'd share with you all this evening. Hopefully I can do it in a few minutes. I've even got a little handout here for you just to take a look at some info so you can kind of look at this. The tyke is bad and it's still on its waters, so.
Thank you.
Probably the first one handed out. I probably got my notes on it. Let me see the first one. No, I didn't. Okay. I just thought I'd give you a quick recap. I mean, a year ago about this time, I was in here and I asked a question about anybody's kind of taking a look at water usages at rates that relates to our developments. You know, we have four wells east of town. Our wells are capped at 320 million gallons. Last year, we used 274 million gallons. Currently, we have in the system, according to Matt's latest work we've done on water rates, 2,389 meters. So I calculated a couple of estimates. They're just ballpark figures, but just to give you some idea of things to look at. First estimate is based on 5,000 gallons a month average usage, which would be 60,000 a year. So if you do the math on that, that's about 115,000 gallons. And basically that, with our 422 duplexes, 700 new houses, that's 1,540 meters. So we've got 444 million gallons of water left to hit the limit. And at the high end, if we divide out the usage at 60 on the low end, it would take 733 meter hookups using 60,000 gallons of water to reach our cap of 320. We've added an extra 35 million by contract with Real Water District number four. We have got that hooked up yet. That cost us about $357,000. But that gets us another 500,000 treatment meters, which means we are short still 224 meters, which is about 13 million. 444 gallons, give or take, which the total water usage at that point to get everybody running would be 368 million, 444 gallons. So if you go on the high end and take just the average of our usage from last year, that would be using 115,000 basically average. So that 44 million gallons by 114,697, that would take us, that would take 386 meters to eat up that 44 million gallons. Add an additional 35 million, and that would be another 306. That means we'd be short still 480 meters. That would need water. A total take on that at that level would take, it'd take 450 million gallons of water. It's a little bit of water boys. Anyway, I just thought I'd point out that this might put us in a situation with water where maybe we can or should not add any additional developments due to water. And to kind of discuss this further, I'd like to invite you to our next quarterly meeting. Hopefully we can meet in late September to kind of take a look at water as it relates to what we're doing with our developments. So more fun than humans should be allowed to have, but I think, you know, we're kind of at a point where we needed to kind of stop and at least have the discussion about where we are. At the last council meeting, we're in the process of appointing an ad hoc water committee of, I think it's seven people. And I was charged with looking at four things. One, addressing the possibility of being able to build a water treatment plant to address the water quality issue. If we're working at quantity, we might as well look at quality. To have a top-notch city, you need to have quality water as well as quantity. And I think financially with the growth, it gives us an opportunity financially in the next five or six years where we could actually really attain that. The other things I've asked them to look at is, one, developing a water conservation plan for the community. Three, a water emergency plan. If we get in a pinch and we need to shut water down and ask people quit watering, maybe we could do that. And then the fourth thing is, in March, because we basically rolled back one month, the increase, just a temporary six-month ordinance, and then we'll look at the pricing of the water based not only on the usage of the last five months, but look at what it would take to price the water so that we could start down the road getting a water treatment plant. The water rates that we enacted, even with the high-end steps, were still below the average rates of all the cities in the ring around Wichita. So we've been selling water at $1.50 per thousand gallons. Our contract with Real Water District number four is $3 per thousand. That's the good neighbor rate. Wichita charges $4 per thousand. Everybody there's selling water too. The Real Water guys meet in here once a month. They have the best snacks of any group I've ever seen. And if you want to, you know, stop by sometime and sit in one of their meetings, they'll share their snacks with you too. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with you guys and then also just ask that, you know, we try to figure out a time in September to meet and continue to work together. So thank you for your time.
Anything else? Close citizens comments. Jay, close citizens comments. Thank you very much. This is I.D. for a little bit of minutes. This is approved of the minutes from July 8th, 2024, regular time of the community.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'm second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. This is I.M.F. Board of Zoning Deals, F1. This is for 124 West Second Avenue, Zone K, Zone 24-4. So a quick background. Brandon Ball has purchased Old Baptist Church on Second Avenue on the northeast corner of Second Avenue and Oak Street. It's followed by two downs of the property. This current classification is C1 Central Business District to R1 Single Family detached. Mr. Ball would convert the property to residential when he needed. The current C1 classification only allows residential on top of commercial. And as well as expressed, he is, does not want to have a commercial on the bottom of the first floor, which has trivial zoning requests. He wants to have it just simply all residential. On November 9th of 2020, the planning permission approved the upzone from R1 C1. This is approved by the City Council on November 16th, 2020, the ordinance is 860. On October 9th, 2023, the planning permission approved lots for SBLT 23-5, separating church from annex building. Since that the church can be sold separately, it has its own tax number. Planning permission will go through the Golden Rules and open the public hearing. After closing the public hearing, they will do a grade after making their determination of going to the City Council for final approval. And if approved, it will go into effect three days after publication in the newspaper. So you guys have seen this before. I will not try to read it as fast as I don't believe I suppose because I feel like I read it too fast. So I'll try to read it a little bit slower. But this is from Article 13, Amendment Section 100.811-17. This is the Golden Rules. You guys have seen this before. Feel free to stop me in the meantime, but what are the existing uses and character condition on subject property in the surrounding neighborhoods? So the property for consideration rezoned is classified as church, place of worship. The land used to the east is an annex building formerly attached to the church. They did a lot split at one point and separated the annex building, which the annex just means an addition to an existing building. But the annex building is being used right now for offices, so that's one to the east. But they split it into two separate tax areas so they could sell the church separately to the annex building. Formally attached to church. To the south, the land used to single-family residence detached. To the west, the land used to single-family residence detached. To the north, the land used to single-family residence detached. What is the current zoning of the subject property that has a certain neighborhood relationship with the request? The property for consideration rezoned is Zone C1 Central Business District. The land used to the east is Zone C1 Central Business District. To the south, the land used to R1 Single Family Residential. To the west, the land used to R1 Single Family Residential. To the north, the land used to R1 Single Family Residential. This land, the time that the subject property has remained undeveloped, vacant, is not a factor in consideration. So no, the land is not a factor. It was a unique architecture that could have rendered it inoperable for business purposes without significant investment to repurpose. So this is something we've talked about before, like schools and churches, they really have a kind of a single-use purpose. They're built in a very unique way. And once those churches or schools leave, it's kind of rendered inoperable. Not a lot of people can do anything with that space. It's not flex space. And so they have to put incentive amount of money to either repurpose it or bulldoze it or something along those lines. So generally speaking, the original property owners who bought that church, they were losing money with it. They're trying to lease it and rent it out as like a venue space. And it just really wasn't cash farming very well for that at all. So they did that lot split and they're trying to sell it off. So would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations? So every time you see four pop up, is there an error in the application of these regulations? Meaning is there a land use or non-conforming use that has that zoning applied to it in that the zone? If we rezoned it, would be considered conforming at that point? So that's what we're worried. So no, it's not non-conforming at this point. Rezoning would not correct that. Is the request caused by change or change conditions in the area of subject property or so is the nature of the difference such change or changing conditions? So perhaps. So housing costs are higher, which might drive more people to purchase existing structures to remodel them versus a new build. This is just a theory. I made this up. So if you guys think it's not real, then feel free. But basically, my idea is my theory that I'm putting is that when construction cost being higher and rates being higher, it might be cheaper to borrow maybe like $100,000 and remodel an existing structure, especially the one that's maybe of a, you know, not a new build, as opposed to trying to spend $400,000 or $450,000 for a new construction. So that's just a theory. Do adequate sewage disposal, water supply, and necessary public facilities, including street access, exist or can be run to certain uses that would be permitted on subject property? So yes, water sewer street already exists and currently serve the property. So we don't need to add sewer water. It's already inserted to that property. It serves the street. Does subject property need to be flatted or re-flatted or lieu of patients made of right-of-way easements and access control or building setback lines? So no, subject property has service lines that run to the east for sewer and to the west for water and the streets, obviously, in the front, as mentioned, and on the west side. Will a screen plan be necessary for existing or pension uses of the subject property? So no screen is required for multifamily or commercial. Multifamily is considered for you as a greater. Under Article 2.102.1, this is multifamily residential building containing more than one unit. So this is, it not requires screening. Is the equivalent land or buildings available or unavailable from development at current has the same zoning as is requested? So R1 accounts for about 56.5% of all zone acres. Roughly 1,806 existing acres approved. It would add an additional 0.183 acres to the R1. So there's definitely a lot of R1 zoning, but for the most part, most of it's being built out of the current building. If the rest is for business or industrial uses, are such uses need to provide more services and employment opportunities? So that does not apply as well as it applies for this is for residential and does not obtain industrial or commercial at this point. Is the subject property suitable for the uses in the current zoning, which has been restricted? So no, housing in a central business district needs to be above commercial. That's the way it's defined. And so we could say, maybe we would consider it being grandfathered in, but for the most part, since it was already functioning as a central business district, it would need to be downsized to residential. Have it be a standard principal use house. To understand, we have rule of restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request that should be set for properties and neighborhoods. So staff believes that there would be no significant impact because generally speaking, churches are going to draw a larger volume of people and vehicles. They have a single-family detached house, which traditionally has about two cars or three cars at the most. And so I think going from a church to a commercial use to a single-family use, we'd probably see a lower impact on the use of that area. Would the request be consistent with the purpose of zoning issued classification and intended purpose of these regulations? So the district releases comes from some of these regulations under Article 4. This district being R1 is established for the purpose of medium-sized, single-family lawn use and allow certain community facilities. It intended that no use being permitted in this issue that will potentially devalue property for residential purposes in this interview of the health, safety order or general welfare persons residing therein. Regulations are typically controlled by the interior population, provide adequate open space, ground, buildings, structures, and homeways, these purposes. And staff does believe this may be the primary use because we're talking about a downzoning, generally speaking. This is Article 1.101. This is the purpose. These are the regulations send us to the following purposes. So when they ask this question, would the request be consistent with the purpose of zoning district classification and intended purpose of these regulations? This is the intended purpose of these regulations and it lists them here. That's why we always read them out. But to run the public health, safety, moral, comfort, and general welfare and protect and control of states of redevelopment and redevelopment. To establish, ready, is our initial classification part of use of land, buildings, or variety of intensive uses. The same is to use in a relationship with boundary zones formed from alleys, parks, and manuses, and buffer areas which can't stand value of each zone. To regulate and restrict the location, use, and encence of building structures and management each day, trade, and the zone for residential, commercial, residential, or purposes for the floodbanks. To regulate and restrict the height, number, stories, and size of buildings and structures, including their listed, found, and new lot line or street right-of-way. Present it to each lot that may be occupied with buildings and structures, aside from yards, courts, and other open spaces. Protect property and historical values and serve energy and natural resources. To drive out of the light, air, and acceptable noise levels. To avoid the undue concentration of population, vehicular traffic, and direct public housing, the use of land on public facilities. To facilitate adequate provisions of transportation, large supply, sewage disposal, schools, parks, and other public equipment. To write adequate public notice on proposed changes to these regulations and zoning maps and an opportunity to turn on subject用地 matters. To establish and provide those leaders to avoid zoning deals, consider appeals, defenses, and industry uses, and have intentions to use rules. And to implement goals, policies, and proposals of the conference plan for zoning distribution. So staff does believe this be conformant to the intended purpose of subject regulations. Obviously, it's very broad. This answer is generally always going to be the same. We always believe that any type of zoning restriction or change or classification modification is going to be in line with these because of how broad it is. Is the request in conformance of the conference plan as a further enhancement of the plan? So Page 16, the Conference Plan, no Site 16 generally, especially in terms of zoning changes that are potentially residential. That promote continued residential development to larger tax basis, strengthen the municipal capacity, provide quality public facilities. Page 17, the Conference Plan outlines housing developed to include corrugate for multifamily, well, and retirement housing. Other specialized housing as required to be believed to find use of the subject community. Page 60, the Conference Plan shows future land use map of this area as single-family residential. So they were obviously saying this was going to be single-family residential throughout the period of area. Obviously, those are all just general forecasts. Doesn't even have to bind. What is the nature of support opposition to the request? Well, support comes as large land use that typically on the same or purpose be converted and necessary, other uses, examples, churches, schools, et cetera, as we've talked about a little bit earlier. And right now, nobody's voiced any opposition to this request, so I can't say. If there is any opposition, I'm not aware of it. Is there any information or are there any recommendations or requests to be able from professional persons or persons relating expertise which is helpful in this evaluation? So housing costs have lined up and it is possible to remodel a church to residential. It needs to be considered more cost-effective than building a new house. So I think that's a question for Mr. Ball, who's behind me. So you'll be given an opportunity to kind of give his vision. But I'm just looking at basically 2024 current rate, which was around 7% at the time when I pulled it. This is 304,000. That's the average home value of Goddard, 304,265. This is potential on interest on that. That excludes, you know, escrow or PMI. This is a payment as a percentage of the gross monthly income of 24%. This is median household income in Goddard currently at 102,261. This is an income requirement as defined by foundations based on the National Association of Dealt Service. And they are indexed. Somebody says you take this and you let it exist and this is your index. It's going to be above 1.00 basically to absorb that cost. And so what I did is I just went to mobile land records. I took the value of the home, excuse me, the value of the church, which when it was sold, it was appraised at around $91,430, including the land. I had $100,000 to it and say, well, based on principal interest and it's a payment of gross monthly income and assuming that to be a household income, this is kind of what you'd be looking at as an income requirement. This would be to pay off principal interest. So it's definitely a cost save because if you take $100,000 and dump it into the church after you purchase it, as opposed to pay your principal interest on average value of a home currently in the city park. So that's just kind of how I came to that conclusion. That's the church. Go to four seconds. Oak Street. This is the annex building. I keep referencing. So you can see here, this is the yellow lines are parcel data from the county. You get a file transfer protocol every three months, and so it's nice to update that data, which you can see here very clearly that they split that to two separate tax areas. Today's recommended by the commission, have the commission chair both open the public hearing and receive in comments. Close the public hearing and approve the rezoning application based on the Zone-24-4. So at this point, Mr. Chair, if you would, you can open the public hearing.
Let's open the public hearing.
All right. Maybe at this time can speak if they want. As long as you give them time to have speak, have the open public hearing. Specific to your denial.
For an instant.
You don't have to go on to. It's time you ask. Scene nine. This chair, do you close the public hearing?
All right, close the public hearing.
Very good. And as mentioned, Mr. Ball doesn't have to speak if he doesn't want to, but if you have any questions for him, he is behind me. At this point, we ask that you approve the zoning application based on the Zone-24-4. There's no further questions.
Is the building at least separate from the annex? I mean, there's no shared resource, no shared building grounds of tax or utility or separate everything?
I think utilities are actually separate because they separated utilities recently because they were running into an issue where the person who was leasing the church, if they defaulted on the water, shut off the water for the annex building. Actually, that's a good question to say.
Same with gas?
Same with gas, yes. So yes, Sarah obviously used to handle utility building now. She's upgraded into the city clerk role, which congratulations to her on that. But she used to handle utility building, but at that point, there was a point where the person who was renting the church, if they shut off the water, the city shut off the water for failure, they're paying on the water bill for the church, they shut it off to the annex building. So the property owner at the time was like, we need to split these off into two separate water and sewer uses and gas as well. And so that way, then after that, he did a lot splits. That way, you just separate the two. That's very much, yeah.
It looks like there's still a fence that kind of connects the two buildings. And then is there a common area between them? How does that work?
I don't think there's any common area between. So I don't think you can access the church from this building. There's a wall right here. You can get in here. There is a fence back here. There might be a common fence area here.
How does that work? It's just you sell it and part of it owns and.
Yeah, just like if you sell your house and you, the fences in your backyard, is that your neighbor's fence or your fence? Right? So that's kind of the same question. We don't make that determination. We let them figure it out amongst themselves.
And obviously the the distance between the church and annex does.
No, it doesn't require. Just generally grant call it in.
Yes.
Because it's an existing structure. They did when it was central business district, but then when they downzoned R1, it's considered grandfathered at that point. So when it was central business district and we did the lot split, it was considered conforming for the separation of the two because they had enough separation trees. Because it was, central business district doesn't have any sideburns at that. So that was considered acceptable lot split. But then later down the road, when they're like, well, they don't want to hang on to this more. We want to downzone it. Then it's just considered a grandfathered non-conforming use, but acceptable use and that's our classification. So if that's the current, now it can still be put back, but it's considered non-conforming setback.
And this is only for single family, right? If they wanted to go to change it into apartments or something, it would be a different.
Yeah, it changes something.
And then they're going to go for a whole other.
You see, we did, yeah, yeah. Apartments would be like an R3 or higher. You have the R3 or R4, and they would have to come back to you for that.
There's another further discussion. Can I have a confirm motion?
I'll make it.
Go to him.
I'll make a motion.
To approve. Second. I'll second.
Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you very much. You're welcome to go to the rest tonight. Have a good one. Something here is vision of this cool house. Secret will leave him. All right, F2 is the Big Arm Development, variance request in case on V A R 24-2. So Bob Armstrong of JGB Properties submitted a variance application for the Big Arm Development located on 49th and 23rd on the southwest corner. The developer would like to reduce the side yard setbacks from the required 6 feet to 4.5 feet. On November 13th, 2023, the developers paid for a time commission, seek their opinion if they would view a side yard setback actually favorable. The request would be for specific lots within the development to have reduced side yard setbacks from the required 6 to 4.5 at a minimum. The developer has noticed that slightly larger duplexes tend to retain tenants longer and are more marketable. And asks that you would like to add additional room for a rear door egress, additional patio space. Planning permission is now considering a formal side yard setback request. Planning permission is considered improvement variance in lots within the Big Arm Development. This is under Article 10.107.107.10C, which is authorized. And under Section 10.17D, this is what's considered an acceptable variance. So you can't just arbitrarily approve a variance for just anything. It has to be one of these items to approve variance for. So we're going with number two. The variance applicable to both regulations, including maximum height and lot coverage and minimum side yard setbacks. And then that the variance request to rise to such condition was unique to property in question, which is not ordinarily found same-zone district, is not created by actual actions of property owner or the applicant. So as mentioned, these are guidelines, something for consideration. Doesn't mean that you have to approve these based on these. This one is more hard and fast. You can't really deviate from these. These ones are just kind of considered guidelines, something for consideration, but doesn't mean that they have to be checked in order to approve it. So it is somewhat unique, given, for one thing, is it not created by actual actions of property owner? So it is not, it is somewhat unique, I say, because of the gas line. I went through it. No action of the taken by the developer at this time. So we haven't actually approved any building permits yet for that development. It's somewhat unique, given that the gas line forces them to have both detention but smaller lots. And so that's why they're asking for this as well, because they're trying their luck to maximize what they've been given. That granting of the variance would not adversely affect the rise of adjacent property owners residence. So now adverse impact on adjacent property owners, the lots are within development and any stormwater is being adequately retained. Current city engineer, public works director, and the engineer from representing the project. So there's no adverse impact, adverse impact would decide setback reduction. Distress application of provision of these regulations from which a variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner and representative of the application. So the hardship wouldn't want to be in the heart of the lot, but it's not considered an unnecessary hardship. So if you fail to approve it, it's not like you impose an unreasonable hardship upon them. If you just said, no, we don't want to do this, that's not considered an unreasonable hardship. They'd still be able to go up to the inflexes. They just would not be able to deal with side yard setbacks as requested. As mentioned, they're asking for this for marketability purposes. That the variance desire would not adversely affect public health, safety, moral, order, convenience, prosperity, general welfare. And that granting the variance desire would not be opposed to general spirit intended in these regulations. And it will not affect health, safety, or welfare. So it will not affect public health, safety, moral, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. It is not against the general spirit intended in these regulations. So all the lots are being requested for the variance, but not all the lots may require. But the here is the Big Arm Development. As mentioned over here, all of the lots are in the variance request, but they may not all require it, given some of these lots are a lot larger than some of the smaller lots. Just kind of lay out of it. Public notice was given at a small cost. Legally speaking, there's a couple of legal opinions here that are included, but it's proved as a form. Attorney's opinion from Robert Quicken O'Boare, laying on 39th, 2023, decision for additional use of variance by the planning permission. It's final and cannot be appealed to the City Council unless we appeal to City County Court. Prior to City Attorney, K S H 12719, so regardless, does not need to be met with a grand variance. So that's kind of what we talked about earlier. So if you were to deny a variance, they can't take it to City Council and get final approval. That's only for like these zoning's, for example. They would have to appeal it to City County Court and prove that what you guys decided was considered unreasonable, which is a very heavy burden for them to prove. So this gives you a wide attitude to make that decision. And then once, as mentioned, K S H 12759. And then once, as mentioned, case H twelve seven fifty-nine U sort of guidance does not need to be adhered to if you want to grant a variance. Today's recommendation, the petition should both open the public hearing, receive comments if any, close the public hearing and approve the variance request case on V A R twenty-four dash two. I think it's Garber's here. There's Garber. So Garber's here, if you guys have any questions for Ken. At this point, Mr. Chair, open the public hearing.
Let's open the public hearing.
Anybody wants to speak at this time?
Then you'll get a chance after.
C nine.
We'll close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. And then we do ask that you approve the variance request case on V A R twenty-four dash two, have to do a duration and if you have anything for Harper.
Jeff, see. I can talk for just a brief minute. If you would go back and forth. Yeah, I will need to. Just thanks for having us here tonight and giving, giving me the opportunity to be here on this. Mr. Armstrong, what happened on this, just for background, when he first had us design this project, he had in mind a certain home in mind for that. And what he has found, he's built a lot of different homes of this style around the community. And he started doing a slightly larger footprint that's a couple feet, it's actually almost three feet wider. And what he has found is that he is having better success renting those units. A lot of people are staying longer, they're nicer units, they're a little bit wider. And so he, he would like to do that. I actually have nine building sight lines prepared on the lots that were larger already that don't require the variance. So I have nine of them done, but he would still like to get this approved so he can finish out the addition and go ahead and have those nicer homes that'll bring in more revenue into the community of, there'll be more valuable properties, they'll bring in more property tax overall. So that's why he would like it. And with that, I take any questions you might have. And oh, by the way, Ken Lee with Garber, so my apologies. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, you know, I, I understand that try to maximize side of the home on the lots, but could, could, could also be just replatted with less flats. And then you could, you could have bigger homes on the fewer flats.
Yeah, you could replat it, be more expensive. Do you want to replat it?
Do you mind if I speak again on that?
No, we're gonna replat it, that's what I did.
So my comment on that is we certainly could, but you know, looking at the city, for the city as far as, it depends on what you want to accomplish with the property. Replating would reduce the number of lots, which would reduce the amount of property tax that would be generated on it. So I think it would be a net negative for the city of order to replat it. You would see fewer homes, which I don't think would be beneficial. One thing I didn't mention or that I will mention, with the smaller setbacks, there are different construction requirements and the builder's aware of that as far as making sure that they're meeting all of the building requirements. That would be the negative to it. You certainly could replat it, but if we were to do that, we would end up losing, you know, two homes, which is another, say, six hundred thousand dollars in appraised value on the property.
Real quick, give me a brief go, sorry. Just out of curiosity, the bigger lots, like for example, the one that'll be on the corner of, next to Goddard Road, which is marked L eleven, is there something other than just a regular home intended for that size of lot or?
No, so what happened on that is, is that there is a gas line easement that runs diving through the property. And that's why a couple of the lots are very, very large. Those are the lots that are very much. And we ended up where we just had extra space, so we just ended up splitting the space up. We didn't, there wasn't enough room to try and put another structure in there. So that's why we was a lot.
Any other questions?
Um.
Pretty tight. Yeah, I mean, I agree. Six feet is already pretty close together. So that, that, that's six feet on either side.
It's a long toe, so they're going from twelve foot separation and nine foot separation. I think when this discussion happened back in November, they mentioned was that they're actually doing two store, are they still doing two store?
Yeah, these are two store.
Yeah, so the idea was the availability of light to have it penetrate between the two duplexes and the separation change. And I don't know, from what I understand, they're not going to do grass to separate that, but it paid back.
Okay.
So that was one of the considerations I came up with and I still think that's a good idea.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Approve the variance request for the big arm development case V R twenty-four dash two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Who's, who's opposed? Sorry, can I get, can I get a roll call? I'm going to do a roll call. Commissioner Parks? Commissioner Hayden?
Approve.
Commissioner Klein?
No.
And Chair Coin? Commissioner Walker?
Approve.
Commissioner Milligan?
Approve.
Commissioner Williams?
Opposed.
Very good. So motion passes five to two. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone want to say for the rest of the night? If not, have a good one.
Thank you.
This is I M G old business, there is none. This is I M H new business. So this is just a quick background. As the city grows, discussions around housing in that city are essential, how the city goes in some direction, wants to take as a transition in the future. The city has invited Kit Corby to speak on her experience with two unit housing specifically. Kit Corby is super agent broker at Kelly Williams Hometown Partners LLC. She's got just depth of wisdom and understanding as it pertains to the two unit market. She gave a presentation to city council, the last council meeting, and I invited her to come back. I thought she did excellent job, so without her, I didn't. Where is yours? I didn't add any additional slides, so I just.
Very exciting. You can take the face off. Okay. Thank you for letting me come speak for a few minutes tonight. I know that Goddard has some concerns over the multifamily and it's understandable. I came tonight with a little bit of data, which last time I just came with some information. But we, going back a little bit, I'm going to give you just a little bit of background. About two and a half years ago, one of the builders that I worked with, they wanted to sell some of their existing multifamily homes duplexes. And so they were from one to about three years old. So I started out selling those. Those were all occupied. So we basically were targeting other investors to come in and pick those up. Well, as we progressed into this, about three hundred and forty transactions later, we got into the housing shortage a couple of years ago. And we began to have a lot of those buyers that were looking at them, hoping to be able to afford both sides because they wanted to live in one side, rent the other side, which wasn't always possible. So they started asking me if we could sell one side. So after hearing that multiple times, I went back to the builder and said, what if we make some affordable housing for people that want new? They want the HOA type communities, their lawn care is going to be taken care of and trash service and things like that. So we did begin to split those duplexes. So right now, I just real quick, before I headed over here, I pulled in our MLS. Now, our current MLS, and I'm not going to give you exact, because I'm doing this off the top of my head. Out as far as Cheney or maybe just a little past that, El Dorado, Leon, Newton, North, Clearwater and Wellington on the south side. So our current MLS is pretty expansive. But right now, in our MLS, I looked at the multifamilies, what we currently have listed that are being sold as full buildings. We have sixty-one active full buildings. Now that is everywhere in our MLS and they're ten years old or newer. So a lot of those are new construction or they're, you know, just in their first year or so. We have sixty-one active. Of those full buildings, only three of mine are listed as full buildings. So myself, and I can't speak for every real estate agent, you know, in our MLS or their builders, but I know that we've been targeting using this as affordable housing. So only three of the, three of them are listed as full buildings. So I looked up what we have in the single family. Now, when I call single family, what I mean is it's a twin home. It's one half of a duplex. We have, and the same criteria, they're ten years old or newer. We have a hundred and thirteen active in the MLS. Thirty are pending. So that is a hundred and forty-three twin homes that are out there. This is predominantly, I would say, Andover, Bel Air, Mays. I have very little, I only have one single side in Goddard School Districts that are veil locked because they've all sold. We have Derby. Clearwater has some, so they're spread out, they'll later. But a hundred and thirteen active, thirty that are pending. One of those is in your school district on Haspel. Of those single family homes, now this is, I do a lot of multifamilies. So the only reason I'm giving you this data is to show you that out of these hundred and thirteen active, fifty-one of those are my listings. So we're specifically listing them to attract single families. We have found that the multifamily, a lot of the multifamilies we do sell, they are being occupied on one side by kids putting their parents on the other side or their siblings buying together. So we, I think that this is very affordable housing. This, and the price range here is one fifty, those are going to be your older ones, to about three hundred thousand. So I know that a lot of the builders are doing different things, but my builder in, in Mays has five different floor plans, starting at three bedroom slab to five bedrooms with full finished basements. So we are building them to attract different sizes of families and different needs. We have some two story. We have the slabs, which are very, very popular with older citizens. We have a lot looking for zero entry, no maintenance, so they're looking for the HOA community, but they're not looking for the patio home expense, which started about three fifty and up. So we found that we're not having any trouble selling them. I have properties under contract and we're just digging ground now. They'll be closing after the first of the year. My suggestion when I was, and I don't know how all the government part works, but if you're working with the builders that want to develop here, I would just make sure that you, they understand, I've already talked to my builder that I work predominantly for, and he's already aware that single family or twin homes is what we need to provide in the Goddard area if you guys are still open to that type of lifestyle here. I have buyers that ask what I have in Goddard and all I have right now is the three bedroom slab and that doesn't meet everyone's needs. So they say, what do you have elsewhere on the west side of Wichita? So I send them to Mays because we have the different floor plans. And by the way, those five bedroom are two forty-five in Mays. Two hundred and forty-five thousand for a five bedroom and for full finished basement. You can't buy a single family home for that with the same amenities. And, you know. So I, and I have lived in Goddard. I live in Auburn Hills, but I'm in the Goddard School District. But I hate to see Goddard not have the housing available that as a real estate agent I'm seeing sell. So that's just kind of my, where I'm at on, what I do on this. I do, I do list regular residential properties, but I work for a builder that does a lot of this type of building. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't know if I missed it or not. What, what percentage would you say is the, the single, single family versus the investor that would be purchasing?
Well.
Well, pardon?
Well, a hundred and forty-three are being sold as single sides.
All right.
And sixty-one are active full buildings. So I mean, you're more than double the single family or the twin home. We're seeing a lot more of those sell and they're, they, they are selling to people that want a home and they want it affordable and they want new. So we're seeing a lot of adults purchase for their college kids, you know, in Bel Air that are purchasing, kids are going to W S U. You know, eventually they may, because there are typically restrictions. Now that again is a developer's prerogative to restrict how many properties can be used to rent, you know, within the community. But we're seeing mostly owner occupants in these single, the twin homes side, they're not being bought as investments. But I mean, like any other residential, you can, you can move out of your house and turn it into a rental. I mean, anybody can do that, but we're seeing these being purchased.
What's the kind of sweet spot price wise? I mean, where, you know, you're starting, if you get, what maybe was the upper end where people are going to start backing out on that?
Well, there are some listed for three hundred for a single side. They've been on the market a little while, but I'm not really seeing any difficulty selling the five bedrooms at two fifty. The my Bel Air ones are two fifty for a five bedroom. Mays, we got them for two forty-five. And we've got four bedrooms at two sixteen. We've got a four bedroom, two story for two thirty-five. So truthfully, I mean, two fifty and under always sells quicker than anything else. You get to three fifty, four hundred, it takes a little bit more to, to move those properties. I haven't been seeing those prices in twin home, twin homes. They're about three hundred or under for those. I know when I was here the last time, there was some concern about, you know, HOAs are good right now and that what happens twenty years from now? That happens in any HOA community. I mean, at any, anywhere along the way, once a community gets so old, I mean, they could opt out, the HOA could become pretty much nonexistent. So I don't think that that's probably any more of a concern for a twin home community than a residential neighborhood that gets to that twenty-five or thirty-year-old age wise. But all of these, I think most of, I know most of the builders that are doing these and I work for actually two of them that are doing them, but they care about the community. They're always fenced nicely, you know, either with privacy wrought iron. We have two car garage, garage door openers, we provide saw, the sprinklers. So they're intended to make them look nice and stay nice.
Do you have a deal for, is this a long-term housing option or is this a cyclical thing right now?
Well, I would say that right now, the Builders Association, everything that they send out to us is we have the, the cost of building material. everything that they send out to us is, we have, the, the cost of building materials is, is skyrocketing the new construction and for single-family homes. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with Stan Longhopper, who does the real estate. So Friday morning, we were in the roundtable for that and the bottom line is, is that the, the big consensus of the 30 or 40 of us that were invited to that roundtable is that single-family home, multifamily home is the up-and-coming. It's space. You can build a lot more homes. I mean, you're building two properties on what would normally be a, a single-family lot. So you, you can get a lot more housing in the same amount of space versus the single family. Do I think that at some point down the road that it could be saturated or slow down? Yes. You know, like any, like any FAD, certain types of homes, they were real popular and then all of a sudden they went away. So at some point, yes. I don't see it right now because I don't see the cost to build changing. The new construction industry in a lot of cases are struggling right now. Because if the cost to build them makes it provocative for a lot of people to own a new home. And the ones that can own a new home, a lot of times, they don't want to get into those kind of payments or, and so forth. But I, I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball.
No, I understand. I was curious.
So I don't know how long it would happen, but I-
You thought it was going to be long-term?
I do think right now-
And that's the second is really what, you know.
Right now, the next year, maybe even two, I see it as still an answer to our housing prices. So, you know, when you have, when you have buyers and in the market that we've had and the escalated prices on resale and sellers wanting premium prices for homes that are 20, 30, 40 years old. And the prices that they've actually been getting because of the market, buyers are beginning to kind of pull back on that. So we're, we're seeing a change in the type of offers we get. We're not seeing the, you know, way over asking, the escalation clauses and all the things that, you know, the as-is, we're seeing buyers come off that. They want a little bit more for their money. And when they're looking at a new five-bedroom twin home versus a 30-year-old five-bedroom for the same kind of price, but not the same kind of condition or, you know, perks. They don't, you know, we're seeing them opt for something new. Now, this is my perspective. There, there are other people that are beginning to, we, we kind of were the pioneer in it. We started the splitting of the duplexes. And, you know, the whole truth is, is that other agents getting ready to list duplexes were calling, what are you doing? So it's kind of snowballed now to where even Jay Russell, who originally built them and he never split them, they were sold as more or less investments or kept as rentals. Even Jay is splitting those duplexes now because of the need for them and the popularity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good information, definitely good information. Let me move on. There is just a fragment of financial receiving file. So this is all the information that we take into account when we draft policy in the future. This is IMI staff report. So the TAAG, which is the Assembly of Goddard Church, would like to have addition added to existing buildings that require site plan since the church is considered commercial. Due to the limited timeframe and the minimized cost for the church, Mike Eby and myself are reviewing the site plan internally under the authority of the City Suburban Regulations Article 11.112.1 to try and help the tag expedite the project. Under normal conditions, Mike Eby and Mike Eby and myself would like to find mission review all site plans. We give the nature of this request due to the fact that it is an addition and not a new building. You would be reviewing it internally for people. So I'm just going to be reviewing their, their site plan for that addition as internally under Suburban Regulations to help them try to expedite, get it done faster, especially since I'm doing charity at the same time. So normally I'd like to break it before you guys, but I just want to give you that heads up. So I'll try to include some, some images in the future, see if we can see what it looks like. But it's, it's just an opportunity to speak. This is a housing study update. So just to kind of tie into what K. Corby mentioned. I'm just pointing to data and this is, that'll just drive the conversation and I hope you guys kind of get some, some more ideas of what I'm looking at, what people are looking at and try to help to round the lines around it. But this is average home value from the Zillow Home Index for single-family detached. It's just single-family detached home values from the Zillow Home Index, just specifically for Goddard, not natural areas, just Goddard. So that's 304,000 to 66, that's like 4 June 30th of 2024. So it would be up and down with this, this number, but that's my government's recent one. You can see this increase over time, obviously. It's, it's been a national increase. Single-family detached new builds, 2024 year of dates. We're definitely always, we're always in the Wichita. I always consider this kind of competition, but Mays is our biggest competition. Unincorporated, so a lot of duplexes are still being owned. Single-family, this is single-family detached, happening in unincorporated county. Pros and, you know, pros and cons of this, it helps, it helps kind of ease that pressure for being in the Goddard School District. But at the same time, if they're on larger lots and as we grow, we annex those larger lots and they don't have any curb and gutter or they don't have any storm drains. So we kind of end up annexing county regulations. So it's just kind of something to consider. It'd be more ideal to decently annex them, build them and they're divided by our standards. But over time, like for example, Elk Ridge, difference between Elk Ridge and St. Andrews, for example, you know, they have streets, but they don't have any curb and gutter and they don't, they have open ditches, they don't have storm drains or larger lots. And so it's our liabilities that might be higher with larger lots than if they were smaller lots. It's just on the per consideration. But we are in a race with Mays always. This is two-family new builds, 2024 between Wachau Bay's Goddard, Dark Plain and Clearwater. Comes from the Metropolitan of Construction Department database. And this is the Wachauer Building Association's single-family detached for the last 40 years. We're the yellow line. So we had a large spike around 2,000 for housing. And so then we have dipped down, obviously. And then this was the Great Recession, this area right here. So you see the Great Recession for people not building as much. And then it says kind of that cooldown and that spike again. Once again, you, you guys see Andover Derby, but it's really the largest influx of single-family detached in the last 40 years. And it's going to be a high concentration for school districts that are considered the higher-quality school districts by Andover, Mays and Goddard. That's obviously going to attract more development than any of the other traditional ones. As K. Corby mentioned, construction costs go up. So this graph can be a little bit misleading, so just read into it accordingly. But this is from the Construction Cost Index, which comes from the House and Development. So it almost looks like the cost of the house goes up and down, but that's not quite right. What you're seeing here is that the cost every year has gone up. It's just how much has gone up every year. This is by a percentage. The only time it really went down as a negative percentage, so like, was the Great Recession. And so you saw 2006, 2007, the housing bubble burst. That's the Great Recession. That's when you actually saw a house being built for less than the previous year. Every other year, it's going to be more expensive. And as you can see, when rates dropped and they shot up very, very high, we have inflation. And so you saw a 17% increase from the previous year. And so overall, this is about, the difference over the last 50 years is about a 91% increase overall for single-family detached. So once again, I took that number that you guys saw for the church and I kind of applied it here. And so what you have here is, this is the year, this is the rate. So I got this from the Federal Reserve. I got this from the Zillow Home Value Index for Goddard at the bottom and then from traditional housing from the HUD, from the Housing Development. Monthly PMI, this is just an Excel population. Pay as a percentage of income, median family income, which comes from the Federal Reserve. Qualifying income from NAR, which is National Association of Realtors and then the NAR National Association of Realtors, the affordability index. So it was really expensive, well, expensive is relative, but it would cost more to borrow money in the eighties. And so what you saw is the NAR affordability index for qualifying income was lower than that one, than that 100%. You want to be 100% or higher. If you're below that, then you're pinched. Your, your cost of this two-bunch is very difficult for you to make in your payments as a percentage of the median income. And as you saw, as it started to relax a little bit, we started to exceed that 100%. It went up and went up and then it went down again. Once again, this red, that's in correlation with the Great Recession. So people lost a lot of value and homes lost value at the same time, but not enough value. Mostly, as you see here, people started losing income more than anything else. And then it went back up again. And at the bottom, this is Goddard-specific, so 2022, 2023, 2024, this is Goddard-specific. So this is the rates for the, average rate for those years. Home average home value according to Zillow Index for those years. Monthly PMI, percentage as a gross monthly income. And then median family income and qualified income. And then what we did is we broke it down as a percentage of the Goddard's population. So what you see here is that the average home value 2024 is currently is 304,000. Currently it's 7%, monthly PMI is 2,000. And then pay as a percentage of your monthly income is 162%. If you make it $50,000 or less, that percent of the population was a little less than 1%. So even our affordability index is way, way, way low. So obviously you're not going to buy a house at these ranges. This is the qualifying income. This is your break-in income. If you want to afford a $304,000 house at 7% over 30 years, this is your break-in income. It's 97,000. So basically, everybody above this, in this range, would be considered, except for some of this percentage that we get, would not qualify. Everybody else would generally be qualifying. Everybody else under that range would not be qualifying, which generate, it's about 40%. So two out of five, two out of five Goddard residents right now cannot afford the average house in Goddard. That's what all that means. Sorry, that was a long one. 40%, that's the takeaway. Here's rentals from the Realtor.com. So this is the most recent one I pulled. It could be out of there, it could be more listed, obviously. But I see a single-family detached in Goddard, the 1825, the three beds. Square footage is around 2,000. It sits on about a little less than, you know, a quarter acre. It was built in 2021. And then we have one side of the duplex at 1435. It's about 1,100 square feet, it's got three baths, excuse me, three beds and two baths. Sits on about the same. It was built in 2020. And then you have a single-family detached, it's 2,000, three beds, two baths, about 2,000 square feet. It was built in 2023. And once again, you have a duplex, one side, around 1,595, built in 2023. And then you have a house that is about 1,400, three beds, one bath, was built in 1911. So the average rent for a single-family detached, according to office general information, is about 1,505. But the average rent for one side of duplex is 1,500. So you're saying you're about saving $300 if you rent, if you rent half the duplex as opposed to renting a single-family detached. And that is it for my data presentation. We'll move on to financial comments.
One of the big concerns it seems to give from, or, or I see from people about the duplexism, all the developments is, is overcrowding schools. Would it be possible to get, to get somebody from, from the school district to come to, from the meeting or put something on the record saying what? What do they think about that? Are they concerned?
Yeah, I can probably see if I can get somebody from the school to come speak on that. They're probably going to go to, they have, we went to a school, the city went to a school retreat where they gave a forecast of what the future looks like. And, and Davis, they hire, they hired a company called Davis Demographics to do data analytics for forecasting so that they can then take whatever data they were given to pair it with their financial advisors so that they can do bond issuance in the future. And right now, the projection that they can do a bond issuance in probably 2025, in now April 2025. And so what they saw based on, on the demographics, I work with Davis Demographics. So anytime the school hires them, they just reach out to me and I give them all that data I just showed you. So basically, it's just kind of goes in the big circle. But I, I help them with their data. And so what, what they saw is sort of a plateau. They saw 2018 was like the peak and this sort of plateauing. And then they're going to see about another spike. As all the housing comes online, they're going to see about maybe 300 people every year. Granted, kids, I should say, every year from like 2027, 2028, 2029, I think is when they're going to see that increase, start to triple in as everything starts coming online. So they're going to do a bond issuance, what they're proposing in 2025. But the overcrowding that they're seeing, it's, it varies depending on who you ask. So if you ask, and I probably share some words with them now, so I should probably come and speak. So that would be worth it. Yes, the answer, I should see if I can get the school to come talk on about that. But they're looking at doing early childhood development center and then maybe another elementary school. But not too worried about the middle school and, I mean, or the high school. They're seeing a mostly influx, which is really not that surprising. Usually Goddard's Demographics, it's going to be young families with kids. So the kids are relatively young. And as they grow up, those kids can, you know, it's possible that they move out. They would move to like Mays, for example. The family might relocate, the kids move to Mays School District or move to a private school. But it's the early, early, like the younger kids that they have more of a concern about how they're going to manage that growth, it's going to be younger kids. So that's why they're looking at early childhood, elementary school and early childhood learning. So I'll see if I can get a school prep to get their feedback on the school district. And so, yes.
And then I wanted to say thank you to the mayor for putting together this report. That's very concerning about the potential lack of water supplies and how that could impact our, our future growth.
I think that's it? Anything else? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.